Arguing about that with my niece.
I'm gonna miss Miles. What shall we talk about, Miles?
So it is seven o'clock and I'd like to officially call the Monday, June 13th, 2020-20, regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Would everyone please stand so we can face the flag and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we're getting started, Ms. Minak, who is normally here to assist us with our meetings, is not feeling well this evening, so we have Mr. Auerbach in her place, and he will assist us and go through the case that we have in front of us and answer any questions on behalf of staff. Also, we do have notice from Mr. Ullar that he is not going to be able to attend this meeting this evening, so what we'll do is do roll call and then we'll need a motion to excuse him since he did provide notice, and then we will call Mr. Riley up, who will be the alternate serving in his place tonight. So if you could go ahead and call roll, please?
Sure, please jump in and correct me if I mispronounce your name. Gesand?
Gesand.
Gesand?
Yeah, here.
Krug?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
And Riley is absent?
No, Riley will be...
Oh, Ullar.
Ullar's absent, yep.
Ullar. Ward?
Here.
And Willner?
Here.
Right?
Okay, so what we will do is now, I need to entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Ullar, who, as I said, did provide notice that he would be unable to attend this evening's meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Sorry, I didn't catch, do you mind repeating?
Krug.
Thank you.
And Gesand. Support.
And would you like to do voice vote or roll call for these?
Roll call, please.
Okay. Krug?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Gesand?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes. And then next up, if we could have Mr. Riley, please come up and replace Mr. Ullar for this evening's meeting. And with him now seating, seated at our table, we do have a quorum, so next up would be the approval of the agenda. It has been presented to us and hopefully everyone's had a chance to review it. I will need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as ordered, as presented.
Second.
So we had a motion by Mr. Gesand and a support by Mr. Willner. So we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Gesand?
Yes.
Okay, next up is the approval of our minutes. The last time we met was Monday, May 9th, 2022. The meeting minutes were included in our packet. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them, and at this point, I will entertain any changes or revisions, additions that need to be made. If not, we'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
So we had a motion by Ms. Ward to approve the minutes and a second by Mr. Willner. We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote to approve the minutes, please.
Gesand?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
We do not have any old business in front of us, so next up is our case for this evening. It is application PBA 0622 located at 2485 Coolidge Highway. The request is for a dimensional variance to construct wall signs for five tenants in a multi-tenant building that would increase the total area of all wall signs to more than 100 square feet on the building facade facing Coolidge Highway, and to construct five identification signs larger than six square feet facing the rear parking lot. If you could go ahead, you know, we'll call you up in a second.
Oh, sorry.
That's, no, that's okay.
All right.
I appreciate your, you being proactive.
I mean...
Yes. So, Mr. Auerbach, if you can just give us some background on the case that's in front of us, please?
Sure, so you have a copy of our review in the packet, and as mentioned, this is a request for two variances for property located at 2485 Coolidge. The first variance is a request to construct wall signs that exceed the maximum allowable area of 100 feet on the facade facing Coolidge, and the second is to exceed, or to construct five wall signs exceeding the maximum allowable area for identification signs, which is six feet in area on the west elevation facing what will be the parking lot, or what's proposed as the parking lot. For some background on the site, this building was originally approved in 2019 as a commercial multi-tenant building. The aerial photo in our review is from the previous building that was on the site, which was a banquet hall and has subsequently been demolished. Since that time, the applicants proceeded with construction. In this year, staff approved an administrative site plan amendment to combine two of the proposed tenant spaces into one, which will be 2,250 square feet, and the remaining four spaces, five in total, are between 1,200 and 1,400 square feet. And the larger tenant space is proposed to be a swim school, and permits have been issued for the construction of that interior. So the first variance request is from Section 947H, which limits the maximum area of wall signs on a building's elevation to 10% of the elevation area or 100 square feet, whichever is greater. And you have a copy of a table in our review that shows the dimensions proposed, or what could be permitted if that variance were granted, as well as calculation showing what the 10% of the wall, of the wall area is for the building, oh, I don't believe the total's included, but at least for each tenant. And so that 100, that 100 square foot maximum applies to the total for all signage on that elevation. The second variance request, as I mentioned, is from Section 944 regarding what the ordinance calls identification signs. Those are defined as "any non-illuminated sign indicating the name or address of the occupant of a building." Those signs are normally exempt from permits, however, the maximum area they're allowed to be is six square feet. The applicant's proposing five signs, each of which are 16 square feet in area, again on the west elevation of the building. So the criteria for considering a variance request is listed in Section 138-606 of the zoning ordinance. To be appro, there's five criteria listed in that section, and each of these two variances will be, need to be evaluated separately, but to be approved, the board will need to find that all five of the criteria are met in each case. So the first criterion is that the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, and something, something unique about the site itself, the way the land was divided, topography, in some cases, buildings that make it unique and render complying with an ordinance requirement a practical difficulty. So the applicant states that the site itself is unique in that it's a multi-tenant building, a large multi-tenant building. It is the case that this is the largest building permitted in, in recent years, and the case being that as, as a permitted use, not being able to build a corresponding signage of an appropriate scale would be a practical difficulty, and would be a unique circumstance of this site. The next criterion is that the need for the variance is not a result, the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Some of the issues here that the sign ordinance, or the sign requirements may be out of date. It was initially adopted in 2003 with an amendment to one section in 2010. The, the sign provisions allow for other types of sign structures, like awnings, pole signs, pylon signs. So more signage could be permitted, it's just a specific limit applies to wall signing, wall signs, as I understand it. So a deviation may be warranted, given that other types of sign structures are, could be permitted. The next criterion is that strict compliance with the ordinance would reasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Again, given the, the, the board could find that the wall sign requirements are out of proportion with a building that could otherwise be permitted, the signing could also negatively impact the, the property owner's ability to lease commercial spaces, as businesses would want adequate signage available for their space. The last criteria, or the fourth criterion is that the requested variance is the minimum necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. Again, as mentioned in our review, the, the size of the building, or at least in our assessment, larger signage would be consistent with the size of the building, as well as other signs on adjoining blocks of Coolidge. And in all cases, even of the variances requested, each sign is still under 10% of each tenant, of the wall area of each tenant's space. Lastly, we don't anticipate that if the variance was, were approved, it would have any negative impact on the surrounding uses. And the same criteria again for the, for the identification sign variance. As you can see on the elevations, the facade of the west elevation, there's, parking is going to be pooled, it won't let me scroll, all right, we'll come back to that. Here we go. The facade of the west elevation is similar to, similar to the other side of a main entrance. Parking will be pooled in the back of the building, so identification of each tenant space is important. Each space will have its own separate entrance. So again, given that all this is a permitted use and type of construction, it could be considered a unique circumstance that could justify approval. Again, even though this, the next criterion having to do with self-creation could be our, well, on one hand, this may be considered self-created, the sign standards on the, to argue differently, could be not, not up to date with the permitted uses in this zoning district. Third criterion, the strict, strict compliance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose. In addition to the same rationale for the other variance request, the, this identification signage is more typically found at pedestrian level. Given the design of the building, the applicant's proposing it at a greater elevation, which is a more appropriate spot, and it would need to be sized accordingly. And again, for the fourth criterion, so the, the proposed signs are less than 3% of the adjoining wall for each tenant's space, so again, that each sign is only 3% of the facade for each tenant, and it would need to be that size to be functionally visible from the parking lot. And lastly, again, if, if this variance were approved, we don't anticipate any adverse impacts, especially since no illumination is proposed on the identifying signs. So in summary, in our review, we have some comments that the signage proposed with the variance is consistent with the Berkeley Downtown Design Guidelines that were adopted in 2018, and approval could be consistent with the guidelines, with those guidelines. So when reviewing this case and making a determination, again, the board will need to cite characteristics of the property that justify either approval or not. And again, all five criteria will need to be met in order for each variance to be approved. And then lastly, we also recommend that the, any, the motion to approve specifically references this plan so that, so it's very clear that the variance is for the signs and their location and, and the area proposed. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
So, do you have any questions for Mr. Auerbach?
I have a question. So each tenant in here is going to have a front door entry and a rear door entry, so an east entrance and a west entrance for each tenant?
I believe so, but the applicant could clarify that.
So we'll, we'll hold off and we'll just table that question as soon as it comes up. Are there any other questions? No? All right, so now we'll have you come up. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Brian Chamin, I'm the owner of Stella's Marketplace and the owner of Aquatots, along with my siblings. My address is 4783 Court Road, Bloomfield Township. Our corporate office is in Farmington Hills at our Aquatots in 14 Mile Orchard Lake Road. We are thrilled that this project is finally coming to fruition. We're about, I don't know, a couple months away from being operational. We're starting to take phone calls at our Farmington Hills corporate office for Aquatots as we start enrolling kids prior to, you know, openings, so that we can open with sort of a bang, or a splash, if you want to go, go with that. But, so it's been, we've had a great response from the city of Berkeley. I've never really been down here at night, but it's a beautiful night, and I just saw kids and parents and at the ice cream shops, and we're really thrilled to be here. To answer your question more specifically, yes, there is a entrance along Coolidge, and there would be an entrance along the rear of the building that people can use to come in. Certain tenants will allow, have that. Aquatots will not, because that's where our pool is going, along those, along that glazing. We thought it would be really cool, when designing this project, that if people were driving by on Coolidge, they would see kids swimming in a pool, given it kind of a downtown area. The city council kind of wanted that. We went back and forth about tinting those windows, so we're probably gonna not do that because the city didn't want us to do that. But yes, for the other remaining spaces or tenants, there will be, they will have the opportunity, depending on their layout, for people to go in and out. And our first tenant in the building is Peteaway, and they will have entrances in both, with the way that they designed, laid out their space.
Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? Yes, Mr. Riley?
Is it correct to say that on the west elevation, those signs, it says that they will not be lit?
Yes, the signs in the rear, I did a project like this in Woodhaven, Michigan, that abutted to a residential area as well, and the rear signage is strictly non, dimensional signage that's non-lit, and it won't be intrusive to any of the, at nighttime, you will not see.
That's, that was my concern, thank you.
Oh yeah, we, we wouldn't want to do that to residents behind us. We just want to be able to give people, when you pull into the rear of a building, because that's where our parking is, they know what tenant is what.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Anyone else have a question for the petitioner? So at this point, what we'll do is we'll have you sit down.
Sure.
We will see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and speak, or if we've had any communication, and then I will open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion.
Sure.
I do not have any correspondence in our packet, so I'm assuming we have received nothing?
No.
Thank you. Next up would be anyone from the public who wishes to speak? We know they're good. One's an alternate and one's a staff member, so we do not have anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and speak. So I will close the portion of the public hearing and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion. Who would like to start? Mr. Krug?
Well, today I just took a drive down 12 Mile where El Patio is going in at, and took it, it's kind of, we don't have that many areas in Berkeley where there's parking behind the, the buildings. And so I went and drove back there, and it seems like this sign, El Patio, is larger than six square feet, and there's quite a few awning signs back there that are larger. And those buildings are smaller in size, especially in height, than what the building that we have here. And in my opinion, I think the sizing is proper. I think it would, especially on the rear, that was the other concern I had, was that they would not be illuminated, which they won't be. And that's about all I have to say.
So we're gonna start with, just to be clear, we're gonna start with the ma, the request for the variance to exceed the maximum area of, of an identification sign.
So that would be the east side, correct? The east side of the building?
Ms. Ward?
Madam Chair, I, I don't want my fellow board members to fall over and faint, but I think what we are looking at here is a practical variance that makes sense and would assist people who will use these facilities, Peteaway being the first tenant, Aquatots as well, so that they can identify where their shop or their particular restaurant is. I think that this makes sense. I do believe that our signage, our sign ordinances are out of date, and they need to be brought up to current standards. And I feel that what we're doing here is the minimum variance which can be granted. I also would like to make sure that the plan that has been submitted will be the plan that will be followed ad infinitum, and that there will be no changes, bigger signs, whatever, that the plan that is before us tonight is the one that is accepted. Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're discussing the signage that would be in the rear of the building, so it would be that, well, that's what we...
And I started wrong, because we should be doing the...
Okay, okay, no, no, that's what I thought, okay, I just want to make sure, okay, so we're gonna go back to, okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we're addressing them separately. So, we're gonna first talk about the wall signs, and that is the, the adjoining wall, the variant, the limit at this point is 100 square feet. The petitioners requested additional square feet beyond what is allowed, so...
234 square feet.
So, that is, the first request would be to exceed the maximum area of a wall sign, so that is, sorry about the confusion of what we're, where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Ms. Ward in basically everything that she said, and especially in the sign ordinance for multi-tenant buildings. It definitely needs to be, this is, I think, the second or third case that we've had...
Yes.
For signs, so I definitely think that needs to be addressed. I don't know how, how that, how we go about doing that, but yeah, I think it's definitely proportional for the, for the multi-tenant building, and it's reasonable, I ask.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'm, I'm more worried about the back, the signs in the back, but if we're addressing the signs in the front first, then I don't, I don't have any objection to the...
Madam Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. This is for the east side of the building, which faces, faces Coolidge. I am recommending that five wall signs be permitted for a total square footage of 234 square feet. 90 square feet would be for Aquatots, and the other four signs would each be 36 square feet, not to exceed, and I'd like to put that in, not to exceed 36 square feet. And that, based upon the criteria that was read to us by Mike, that the variance is a unique circumstance because it is a multi-tenant building. It is one of the largest multi-tenant buildings to be constructed in Berkeley in a very long time, and I can concur with that. That the signage, the sign ordinance is out of date, that the strict compliance with the existing rules and regulates, regulations does not work for a multi-tenant building such as this, and that it would be burdensome to the owners. And that it, the requested variance is necessary to do justice to the property owners for the size of the building, and that it does not adversely impact any of surrounding property owners.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Ms. Ward and a second from Mr. Willner. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Just a, I think I, I, it was very clear, thank you. Would, was your, was the intent of the motion to add the, reference the plan date as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, yes. So that would be June, June 13th, as presented and approved by the zoning board.
Got it, thank you.
I'm stepping ahead here, I apologize.
I was gonna say, the date up there is April 27th.
I think you missed the date, the 4/27 date on the plan.
Oh, okay, April 27th, then.
Got it, thank you.
Yes.
So I would say that the plan's dated April 27th.
Yes.
And presented at the June 13th meeting.
Thank you, then I will...
Thank you for the clarification, Mike.
Oh, sure. So I'll call the roll. Gesand?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the first part of their request has passed. The second variance they were requesting is to construct five identification signs larger than six square feet facing the rear parking lot. And so we did go through the request and the, the need, the requested need for the variances. We can call the petitioner up once again if there's any questions for him.
Is that parking lot gonna be...
Sir, Mr. Petitioner, if we could have you come forward, we might have some questions, please, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, on the backside, the west, the west view? Yeah. Is that parking lot, it's not illuminated signs, we already determined that, but it's, the parking lot is gonna be lit? Yeah, I believe there's four or six approved pole signs or, pole lights. Lights, and they go on, they're on all night, basically? I don't think we'll, I mean, I don't know if there's a city ordinance that requires them to be on from dawn until dusk, but we'll do whatever the city wants us to do with them. I mean, we close our business, everybody in there pretty much is gonna close at eight or nine o'clock, just for safety purposes, we'd probably keep them on till midnight or one in the morning, or they may be on a photo cell. They might be on a photo sensor that keeps them from dawn till dusk. But I think they're the shorter versions where they don't, and they don't illuminate back towards the residences.
Okay.
Are there any other questions about this particular variance request? If not, we'll go ahead and have you sit down.
Sure.
Thank you. We did not have any correspondence on this, we do not have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, so I will bring it back to the, the board for discussion.
Do you have something you wanted to say about this?
I was just, it just seems like, it just seems kind of like a little bit of overkill having the sign up towards the top of the building, and for rear entrance shopping centers, I'm more familiar with the sign being at the top of the entryway so that they know what door to come in, and I'd be more likely to approve that than to approve...
It looks like it's all glass, so they're, I mean, I think I'll, I'll lower them slightly, I guess, but...
We're not gonna get them...
There is a parapet wall there, so I'm wondering if it, it makes it easier to put the signs on that parapet wall instead of onto, that's what it looks like, if you look at the roof hatch there, it looks like, it's, it looks like there is a parapet wall.
It just seems with, with the neighborhood...
You can actually see, you can actually see the line where the parapet wall is.
Yeah, it just seems with, with the neighborhood behind, it might be, might be better to have it down more.
Yeah, I mean, is there a reason you, they, they put them up so high? Bruce?
No, I don't think there's, there's any reason etched in stone. I, I just think being uniform with the Aquatots, because that Aquatot sign is a facade that is created out of the wood paneling, if any of you've seen it, as you go down Coolidge. So we wanted that to be uniform to what it looks like in the front, so we put it on that facade, and I feel being centered in that facade gives the shopping center a more... that facade and I feel being centered in that facade gives the shopping center a more uniform look. So we, we even them all out as the sign belt is all along that ridge. I, I don't, them being non-lit at nighttime, I don't, I think, I think on paper it looks like it's more, it's off, it's off dimension, but I think if you see it in, on the actual building, it's going to be more centered along that brick facade wall to give it a, an equal proportion above it and below it. I don't think it's going to be, and Cal could probably tell you here, but I don't think it's going to be more top-heavy, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, the placement is not etched in stones.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
That's okay, if you can just also state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely, my name's Cal Mansur, I'm with Sign Emporium, 11035 East Nine Mile Road, Warren, Michigan. Again, the sign belt that you're seeing there right now can be adjusted. Right now, it is proportional to the Aquatots, but there is room to where, you know, this image that you're seeing now is really not proportional to where they're going, they're more centered of the unit itself. That's not really etched in stone, what you're looking at right now.
Okay.
So I think, I think as my desire would be to see them with an equal proportion of brick above them and below them to the window line, so that they don't look, I think, I don't want them to be so high that there's a huge gap between the window and the sign where the brick is, it just wouldn't look functional. I got a chance to come up here, that's great.
Congratulations.
Score one for you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead. Ms. Ward?
Madam Chair, are you ready for a?
It's, whatever your pleasure is.
Are you ready for a motion?
Is there any other comments, questions, concerns?
This, in the motion that we mentioned, that these signs are non-illuminated or non-lit in the motion.
That would be part of the motion.
Yes, thank you.
All right, then we will go ahead and, Ms. Ward, if you would like to provide us a motion to consider, please?
Uh, yes. Regarding the west side of the building signs, I move that we approve the size and scope of the signage and that based upon the comments that were made here, that certainly they'll, the sign company will take into consideration placement of the signage. As for the need for a variance, many of these things are going to be restated from the previous motion, that it's a multi-tenant building, that our sign ordinance needs to be updated. It would be burdensome for those restaurants and/or businesses to not have a sign in the rear, that the signs are less than 3% of the adjoining wall and that the variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. And I would also like to make sure that this is in accord with the plan that was submitted for 27/22 and that the signs are not to exceed, and I like not to exceed, for the four smaller tenants, 16 square feet.
And additionally, those signs will not be lighted.
And that the signs will not have illumination.
So we need a support for that?
No support.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Ward and a support from Mr. Willner. If we could go ahead and have a roll call vote, please? Sorry, you've got a lot to write.
Oh, no. Riley?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Gessens?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Willner?
Yes.
So you, both your variance requests have been approved, so you can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so next up would be other business, do we have any other business we need to discuss?
I have no updates tonight.
One thing I would, I, I just, I think at some point we need to direct, I think it's the planning commission to reevaluate the signing ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
I can address that.
Okay, perfect, so we'll go ahead and then move on if we could have, we'll, we'll jump to the liaison report then, because that's a good segue in.
They sometimes forget to give media. Yes, the city, I was going to address that after hearing your conversations tonight. The city has, knows of many deficiencies in our sign ordinance, known for a couple of years, but it is a process of juggling priorities and it is something we want to do, but it isn't budgeted for the next two years because of higher priority zoning issues that we're looking at, but it is absolutely on the radar and something that's going to be seriously looked at. It's a very technical process and there's also a lot of legal and First Amendment issues around it too, so it's not something that's easily and quickly done. So that's a lot of the reason for the, you know, that we haven't just slammed something out yet already, but it's definitely on city council's mind and something we want to address.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, that's all, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so then I will open it up to the staff or board member report, so I'm, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you have anything to share with us today?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you for filling in, you've done a great job and we're sorry Megan was not available to attend. Is there anyone in, from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing that there is no one, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting of June 13th, 2020 at 7:36. Thank you all for attending.